To order, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, would you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, citizens comments. We have the presentation of life-saving award to Officer Rus.
Good evening, council. This is Officer Daniel Royce. Back on October ninth, two thousand point one, Officer Royce responded to a medical call at Superior Industries where a female was reported to be down the ground and unresponsive. Staff at Superior were already tending to her with CPR and utilizing the AED. Officer Royce and one of the Morris firefighters arrived on scene at approximately the same time. Officer Royce was informed that the AED had already delivered one shock to this patient. While the firefighter was providing the chest compressions, Officer Royce began providing breaths utilizing her pocket valve mask. This mask allows for oxygen to be pushed into the airway of the patient without making direct mouth-to-mouth contact. During this time, no further AED shocks were delivered. Once the ambulance arrived on scene, Officer Royce then continued to provide oxygen into the female's airway utilizing a bay valve mask. The patient is currently at home and recovering. Through the efforts of Officer Royce and all other responders, this individual may not have survived. As we all know, Officer Royce started with Morris P. Spartan in July twenty one. Her dedication has shown greatly. She has a drive to learn, to support, and to serve this community, which is what we all look for in our officers. For Officer Royce's efforts, I want to present her with a life-saving award and a commendation badge on the bar that she will receive with her class A uniform. Class A uniforms are commonly worn for court and for other special occasions.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, any other citizen comments? No public hearings, so we'll go ahead with the reading and approval of the minutes.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from October twenty first. Or, I'm sorry, October twelve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. And the condensed version?
I'll move approval of the ten, twelve condensed version of the minutes.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And the consent agenda, it's the audit of the city bills, pay estimate number two, the runway extension phase two, revenue and expenditure report, the nine eight twenty-one library board minutes, and the nine fifteen twenty-one tree board minutes. And I'll move approval of that consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. And we're moving on to the petition's requests and communications. We have a motion directing a letter be sent to Morris Floral. I think Aaron, you're here to kind of fill us in on that?
Yeah, or I can let Blaine start and I'll finish.
Okay.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, the city council directed me to talk to Aaron and to talk to Mr. Melberg about this situation with this building. I did talk to Aaron, and I was getting ready to talk to Mr. Melberg, and there's a third party got involved with it, and I won't explain who that is or why there's an involvement with that. But I was talking with a third-party person about, you know, they wanted to know what the current status of the building was and whether or not, you know, it was, the property could be sold, and a couple other questions about it. And in the end, what I can tell you is this, that I'm still recommending, and Aaron can talk a little bit about that, that the city council direct us to send a letter to the owner of the property, giving the owner until the twenty-third of November, which is our meeting, second meeting in November, to either secure the building or to tear it down. And so this is kind of the deadline that we talked about last time. I fully anticipate at some point between now and then, there's probably going to be additional information that's going to come forward with regards to what's going to happen with Mr. Melberg with his floral business and with his living condition, and then I'll be able to come back to the city council and talk about it. And, you know, one of the things that I talked with Aaron about, and he can maybe explain this a little bit more, is originally, you know, my thought was to try to meet with Mr. Melberg and try to work out a deal to get the property into our hands so that we could deal with it. And there might be some, some good reason that maybe instead of doing that, we, we put the mandate on the property owner to take care of the building and then remain the owner of the building, and then ultimately, whether, you know, we, it'd be no different than if we're mandating that somebody, you know, clean up their yard or clean up their sidewalk, and we do it for them, and then we assess them for it. The only difference is this one, you're talking probably seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars worth of costs that you would wind up doing and then assessing back to the property. But, you know, one of the things they're looking at, is there a cheaper way to get that building torn down? One of the things that they're looking at is whether or not, well, we, we know based on the discussion that I've had with the third-party individual that there is underground tank there that needs to be dealt with, and it's probably an old fuel tank that was there when they used it for heating the nursery stock that was in the old buildings that eventually got torn down. And the one thing I would tell you is that at one point in our past, we did order that some buildings be torn down, and a third party stepped in and tore them down, so we didn't actually have to do that project. There was somebody that stepped in and helped Mr. Melberg get rid of that, and that was taken care of, and obviously now we still have the building left. So, so things have changed a little bit from the last time we talked about it, but at the same time, I'm still recommending that we go ahead and do this action just to keep it on track so that something happens with that. And then securing the building could be as simple as you get out of there, lock it up, cover up all the holes in the building, and, and just make sure nobody gets into it, animals don't get into it, at least for the time being, and then we can move on from there. But tearing it down, obviously it's going to be tough to tear it down in the next month, but still at the same time, that's the step that we want to put on the table to keep, keep things moving. I don't know if you want to jump in and...
Yeah, I, so then the next step, if we don't get compliance here, you have a couple of different tools in the toolbox. One of them is condemn the property, which is you buy the property and tear it down, basically. You order, you get a court order to tear it down, and you get evaluation on that property. And we end up owning that property. The drawback with that is, is you can, you're subject then probably to some arguments that, oh, we're, we're doing this just to benefit the city, or there's going to be some kind of a sale that'll benefit the city and make money off of it, and that's not really what you're, you're trying to do. So the other option is to have it declared a hazardous property. And in that action, you go to court and you get an order to tear down the building, and then a special assessment is made on the property, kind of like what we do with people don't mow their lawns or don't shovel the sidewalks, and it's assessed to their, their property, and then they still own the property. They can still do what they please with the property, but ultimately, the building is either repaired by us or torn down by us, although most of the time when a city deals with a property, it's so far gone that the logical choice is to tear down the building and assess them for the cost of tearing that building down. Either way you go, the first step is to try and negotiate. It's always cheaper and easier to try to negotiate it, and that's where we're at right now. Any questions about any of that?
I think it's in our best interest to let the property owner, if he can do something with it, saving us the expense and the headache of going through it, so, but it's time. We tried to get something done by last December, and yeah, here we are. December's coming around again, so yeah, I think it's time we, to take the step, and hopefully they can get something done with it, and if not, we'll have to go from there. And I think the action you took at the last meeting prompted what's happening now, and the action you take at this meeting will keep that process going, you know, so that we don't sit and wait another six months to find out what happened.
I agree with you. If we don't, if we don't keep moving forward, it'll just, it'll stagnate, and we won't get anything done, so... I'll make the motion directing a letter be sent to Morris Floral.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution authorizing the submission of MinDOT Local Partnership Program grant for a Highway Nine sidewalk.
So I have Jeff Coon here, so I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone, Jeff, and... Actually, we probably should have put them all in order so that, that, because the next one's playground, but... Jeff brought this to my attention, you know, we had, we had talked a little bit about this, you know, that when the Highway Nine project was done, that would have been a great time to put a sidewalk in along Highway Nine. It ends at the Dairy Queen, literally ends at the landscaping for the, the bank there. The sidewalk does, and there's nothing going to the south along the MinDOT right-of-way, and, and so then, I, you want to just explain what the program is and what, what we're asking you to do right now?
Yeah, so basically, there's a local partnership program through the state of Minnesota within any, within any trunk highway right-of-way. So Highway Nine is trunk highway right-of-way. Trunk Highway twenty-eight would be another instance that we could potentially do that. The local entities, i.e. the cities municipalities that have jurisdiction in there, are able to apply to MinDOT to put some infrastructure in to improve if it has a function within the, again, the transportation vicinity of the road, which would be an eligible item. They can go ahead and apply for that. There's a pot of money that MinDOT annually puts forward for these types of projects, again, to alleviate the need for them to have to push the project forward. It'll be more in the jurisdiction of, of the city to move it forward. It's an eighty-twenty cost share, is that right, Blaine? Is that what was in the documents? It's either eighty-twenty or...
We have, we have to do the design engineering and then there...
Oh, it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, it's a hundred percent. We have to do the design engineering, then it's a hundred percent funded.
Yep.
Or, the only other thing we'd be responsible for is if there has to be a relocation of utilities.
Or in right-of-way.
Or any right-of-way, but...
We're proposing, we're proposing to put this basically on the, would be the easterly...
Yeah, to the MinDOT right-of-way.
Side of MinDOT right-of-way, okay, trying to go on the back slope, if you would, not on the in-slope of the highway. Get a little bit further away from the busier travel roadway if we can. Avoid the wetlands as, if possible, or as much as possible. So that was kind of one of the things that I brought to Blaine's attention, that it's a possibility. He's always talked about connectivity here in town, and that would be one way to kind of continue the sidewalk that runs from your downtown area out southerly along trunk highway nine and connect up possibly to, you know, the school and/or some of your other trail system that's further south. Maybe we go past Columbia at some point down the road, so that would be something for your guys' consideration. We can go ahead and put this letter of interest in. I think the money's right now, the earliest right now is not a twenty-two money's, but it's twenty-three or twenty-four money's.
Would that be on the, which side of the highway?
Yeah, that's kind of the...
On the east side, so it'd run across the front of all those properties that are there.
Okay.
I like it. It's a good project, you know, we get, that road gets walked on, rode bikes on quite a bit. So I think from a safety standpoint too, it'll be nice to keep everybody on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Some other communities have started to do this. The city of Alexandria is one of them. This is a newer program within the state of Minnesota. Again, it's more as a result that, you know, MinDOT, when they come through with their projects, they're looking, they were in, in the past, looking at just more of a highway need than the pedestrian need. And so these needs have kind of now more recently come to their forefront. And in order to move them forward a little sooner rather than later to wait till their next highway project comes through town, they've kind of put a pot of money together for this specific thing. It's still their money, but it, it's going to be, the local efforts is going to be kind of driving it a little bit more than, than MinDOT itself.
Yeah, and one of, one of the things that we'll be looking at, we, we, actually I got a email from the state of Minnesota today talking about safe routes to school grants. And we do have that safe routes to school planning process that's just coming to the end. And then the next step we'll be looking at, doing a, a infrastructure project for that. But, you know, one, one of the things that Jeff and I talked about is if you look at South Street, at some point, the sidewalks are taken out. So by the funeral home, by the bank, the sidewalks are taken out. That's a main state, state aid road for us. And, and eventually, what we're looking at is connecting South Street, Elm Street, Columbia Avenue, and then we actually talked about, we talked a little bit in the park board about, you know, thing, because we've been doing sidewalks. Some, some really good sidewalks, like around Green River Park and things like that to connect stuff up so people can walk. And so you go right, if you keep going down the highway over to Birch and come around the corner, that's our bike path. That connects up to the whole bike path system, and we know that there's lots of people that are walking and doing all kinds of things, and jogging and stuff like that. So it's just, it's a, it's a good system. Everybody I've talked to is really excited about possibly having that there. You know, so the first step is to say we're interested in doing this. The next step is to do the design on it and then apply for the grant, and, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, you get notified whether or not your, your initial interest has been accepted, and then you'll be notified of how much money you'll get, and we'll go through the more formal, formal process of putting together those plans and specifications. This is the first step.
I'll move on that resolution authorizing the submission of a Minnesota DOT, Minnesota DOT Local Partnership Program grant for Highway Nine sidewalk project.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion?
Why are we stopping at Columbia and not going down to Birch now? I mean, if we're going that far through the whole stretch, why not go down another couple blocks and get that hooked up?
We could look at that. I guess this was a good cutoff point at this point, but, you know, if you want...
It was just because, you know, you're talking about Columbia's a state aid road, and it comes up to the highway, and we, we knew where it had to start, it's over by the Dairy Queen, and then where do we finish? And so that seemed like a good spot to finish, but it was kind of an afterthought, thinking about, oh, yeah, we got the bike path, and we got Birch and stuff like that.
We got a lot of residential, the church, I mean, the stuff that's down there, just going a couple more blocks.
Yep.
When we're doing it, I mean, they're looking at the cost, if the state's willing to help us out. We have our engineering cost to, to get it done. I just, if, to, to get it done, if it's going to be just a little bit more, I think it just would make sense to try to do the whole stretch if we can.
Good point. We can, we can probably look into it and see if we can stretch those dollars, if they have enough dollars to move it forward, or if this makes a more reasonable breakout point for their funds for the year or whatever. We'll, I can definitely talk to them about that.
Yeah, if we're bringing someone in to do it, a couple more blocks isn't going to take that much out. And I just think to, to connect it all, when we're doing it, would make sense.
Sounds good.
Good plan, yeah. Okay, we'll have vote for that. All in favor, say, oh, no, we need a roll call votes on these, so...
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Golubson?
Yes.
Mayor Peters.
Okay, and next resolution, authorizing the purchase and installation of a playground set in Eastside Park.
The only thing that's changed on this, I think you've seen this before, is when we're in the park board meeting and talked, talked about this, to get a motion from them to go ahead and do this, there is something that was brought up that we talked about before in the park board meeting, and that was adding one more piece of equipment, which would be basically more of a handicapped accessible piece of equipment, and then the placement of it would be in, in the, in the corner of the playground closest to East Eighth Street and, and California Avenue. There's actually, in the design, you can see where, where the swing would be located. And, and it wasn't budgeted, so then I had an updated budget on, on this playground set. And so the updated budget is, is about seven thousand dollars more for it, and that includes installing it. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and order this. Part of the resolution to order it is to allow for either the salvage or the sale of the old playground set that's going to be taken out, and that's the old elementary school playground set. And all the other playground equipment in that park will stay as it is right now. We're not going to touch any of it. And then, you know, as soon as, as soon as they get the thumbs up to do it, then Jim Ditbener and Brad Searle, they'll figure out, you know, what they might do is make it available for somebody to buy through our, our system that we have of advertising it through, through the state auction. And then, like Jim Ditbener said this morning, if somebody wants to come in and take that out before we go and tear it out, you know, maybe we let them do that as long as, as, you know, it just saves them time and, and taking it out, because I know I've talked to at least two people that were interested in it. And so I think they have a good plan for how they could maybe facilitate that, and if it doesn't work, if nobody wants it, then they just take it out and they salvage it the best they can. And then the plan is to have that playground set put in, just like we did with Green River next spring. You know, and that company that came in, it's the same company that, that we have a quote from to put it in, safety first. They'll come in, I think it took them three days to put that, that playground set in Green River Park, because they know exactly how they go together, how to put them in, how to put the footings and everything, and then our guys just come in and put in the fill, you know, the wood chip fill afterwards, and that seems to work out pretty good. So that's my recommendation, is that we go ahead and order that and, and then authorize the removal and sale or salvage of the old one.
Blaine, the only concern I have with, you know, I suppose you'd say a third-party coming in and buying the equipment and taking it out, what's the liability on our end? I'd have to see if somebody could get hurt.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we would have a liability. You know, we advertise it as is, you know, they have to deal with it. You know, we're not going to be responsible for what they're doing, you know, and, and as far as somebody else buying it, taking it somewhere else and setting it up, we wouldn't be responsible for that once we sold it.
I'd be more concerned for, for stuff that actually happens on our property, but they're kind of taking on, assuming the liability.
Yeah, I imagine that stuff's all cemented. Is it, how is it secured?
Cemented in.
Yeah, so...
So it's a lot easier for our guys, just going with the loader and pick it up and pull it out and move it, you know, than if you're going to, if you're going to systematically take it apart so that you can put it back together. And there's pieces that are, are broken on it. That's why we're getting rid of it. You know, but if, you know, like the one person said, yeah, it'd be nice to have a playground in my backyard for the grandkids. It's like, okay, well, let's go buy one. You know, that's, you can go buy one, because it might be a, a really big deal to try to, to pull one of those. I don't know if people really look at it that closely when they, when they see them, but there are kids that play on it now, you know, and we've kind of sealed off some stuff, but... No, I thi, I think we'd be okay liability-wise.
Was the plan to have that out yet this fall?
Yeah, definitely, shortly.
It's going to start getting wet if we keep getting rain.
Right, yep, and that's what we did last year. It doesn't take, it won't, it won't take them long to take it out. It'll be out in a few hours.
All right.
If we do it.
I will move a resolution authorizing the purchase and installation of a playground set in the Eastside Park and including the disposal of the existing equipment, either to be sold or salvage, whatever, at the discretion of the crew, what we figure out.
I will second.
Okay, we'll have roll call vote?
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Golubson?
Yes.
Mayor Byer?
Byer.
She hasn't done this for him.
I remember that.
I'd be even stranger if he answered. Okay, it is October. Let's move on to the resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract with Yankee Ridge Road.
Yeah, and so now I'll have Jeff come back up and, and you, you do have a memo in front of you talking about what, what, what's going on with Yankee Ridge, and, and my recommendation to the city council is that you should accept the bid from Riley's in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-six to run that water line from the current location that it ends by Heartland all the way up to Northridge Drive. And Jeff can maybe explain a little bit more about the, the bidding and...
Yep, so we did have three bidders, and they were actually a little closer than what they appear. Low bid was Riley Brothers in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, a little bit over our engineer's estimate, within five, ten percent. Given the, kind of the market right now, I think it's reasonable to have that, you know, that much over our estimate and still kind of be within reason. Pipe prices are a little bit higher, labor shortage, COVID stuff. So I, I think it's a good bid. It's something that the contractor is still proposing to actually probably do yet this fall. It's work that they could actually do this fall. It doesn't involve any road work that needs to be put back for people to have access over the top, you know, after they do, do complete the underground work. It's probably going to be beneficial to the contractor to kind of take on this work in, in the fall. Getting closer to the freezing temperatures, or the ditches along Highway Nine and along Yankee Ridge Road are, are not dry at this point. Normally aren't dry. We're going to have high firm water. So anyway, I would say that it'd be a, a good project, and I think it'd be timely for the contractor to complete that work and then also get a water line in for the county highway departments. Hope for your guys' consideration.
How far along down Northridge are we going?
All the way up, past the Northridge.
Just to the intersection.
Yep, we're just going to...
We're not going to go around the corner at all.
Okay.
But then... We're going to go across Northridge, yep.
Yep, we're going to go across to the opposite ditch.
And then have the height of there.
Okay, all right.
On the north side.
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Jim Riley and Sons, are they going to hook up?
Yep.
Believe so.
Right-of-way?
Yep, that's what Kirk said.
Thought that they'd, we'd talked in some earlier discussion that they were going to hook up.
Yeah, and I talked to Rebecca Young. I think the plan for the move-in for the county on their new project is March first, is what she was talking about, and while they do have the ability to probably hook up to their well water, they do not want to run well water through that new plumbing system in that building, which is probably a smart thing to do, but they did, you know, one of the issues that came up was because they are hooking up the city water, they are required to have a sprinkler system in that building, which they did contract to have that put in, so, I mean, it's, you, you know, it, it all got started because they're building a county garage, you know, and it just made sense for the county garage to have city water. But then realistically, the thing I would tell, I'd tell you two things right now. One is that this is a good project for the future, because now we have water up to Northridge Drive. And, and when we did our rezoning, we zoned that property along Northridge Drive as residential to, to facilitate... Along North Ridge Drive as residential to, to facilitate future residential development for the city of Morris. So at some point of, if somebody makes a deal on land, you know, whether it's university land or other land to put in a residential subdivision. Part of that project would be connecting water and sewer to that neighborhood and it's right there on both sides. You know, with a little bit of work, you know, obviously turn, sewer's the tougher one than water, but uh, the other thing I would tell you is that. We have no idea what's gonna happen next year with prices. Prices are really getting funky right now and. And uh, even to the point where we just had a discussion this past week that. We got our solar panels at probably the cheapest price they're gonna be for a while. Cause right now solar panels are going up in cost because of what's happening with COVID and, and the supply shortages. From factories and transportation, every bit of that, so, so we got in right at the best time, cause it's as low as prices are gonna be for a while. Well, it's the same thing with what's happening with, you know, it's my understanding, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but like with Hancock Concrete, it's probably. I'm sure they're dealing with issues with being able to get cement and products and stuff like that. That's one of the things, uh, I, I did talk to Chris Riley about this. Um, he was wondering what the likelihood of us going forward with this was gonna be, because he has to order the pipe and, and they have a supplier. And they think they'll be able to get it right away and the plan is for them to probably come in the eighth of November. And then uh, I know I talked to Joe Riley too and they thought it'd take them about ten days to do the project. So they want to get in, do it, yeah, the big thing is they gotta have the supplies to do it, so. So it's, I, it's probably the best time to do this project now and then just one final thing is. The funding for this is gonna be through our ARP funding. Uh, it's a little bit more than what we originally talked about spending on, on, on this one project and the balance of it. We have five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the balance of it, uh, we're probably gonna allocate to the, the next thing that he's gonna be talking about. You know, so, so the funding for this is gonna come out of, out of the ARP funding.
Which is what that funding was designed for.
Yeah, they allow water and sewer infrastructure.
Yeah, I like the idea of getting it out there and, and for uh, future development along there. I think that's probably one of the areas that. Could be, so I'll move on to resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract for the Yankee Ridge Road Waterline Project.
I'll second. And we'll have roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes.
Mayor East.
Uh, resolution approving an engineering and financing study for the East Sixth, North Columbia, North Iowa Avenue Improvement Project.
So this is our next improvement project and, and uh, there's two parts to it. One is the feasibility study. Um, you actually have a copy, I think it was sent to you of the updated feasibility study uh, for this project and typically they're feasible. I mean, that's just the way it works out, but uh, the, the estimated cost of this one was uh, two million six hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Uh, the financial feasibility of it, um, there's not necessarily a study, so to speak, that's a, a document that I, I provide to you. But um, you know, the, the way we're gonna finance it is through a combination, and this is a very interesting one. Cause there's actually three parts and if you look in that packet that was sent to you, you're gonna see, there's three distinct parts of this. Actually, it's listed on the, the um, the feasibility report. The first part is kind of a standard. Um, city special assessment improvement project that goes from California up to Columbia on East Sixth Street. And there's about thirty properties that are involved with that and that's, that's pretty standard. The second part is Columbia Avenue from Seventh Street going all the way, I think we're gonna go all the way out by the highway.
Yes.
Completely, and that's a state aid road. So there's some different rules and regulations with regards to state aid uh, funding and stuff like that. And then we have Iowa Avenue, which is very interesting, cause there is a sewer line in Iowa Avenue and there's, I believe, three connections. Cause you have the USDA, whether or not the USDA is on Iowa Avenue or North Ridge Drive, but at the most, you probably have three connections. Superior's probably got two of them.
So where, how far are you going on Iowa?
So it'll go to the city limits.
Up to the uh, the, the station up there, the USDA?
Yeah, just past the USDA station and then actually, used to be gravel, but then uh, um. Uh, Neil Schmidt Gal actually paved his own portion of that township road up to his driveway. So, but we'll go to the city limits with the road and, and then we're gonna look at the assessment part of that. So realistically, from a financing standpoint, um, we have a, we have a couple options for financing projects. In a normal special assessment project, uh, what we have to show is twenty percent of that project has to be assessed to property owners. Well, this project's two point six million, but when I did the calculations and looked at the basic information and it's just. Kind of basic information getting into it, um, based on the fact that we're gonna get state aid money, based on the fact that. Um, we're gonna, we're actually gonna use the balance of our, our ARP money. Um, and actually Jeff and I talked about this beforehand, there's a couple of things that are included in this project. That we're gonna take a closer look at and probably wait until we meet with the property owners. To make a final recommendation on whether or not, uh, one example is sidewalks on Sixth Street. Um, and another one is, you know, this calculation has storms who are being put in on Sixth Street. Where right now, most of the drainage just comes down the hill, you know, and, and we know there's some issues with the, the cross streets at the bottom of the hill.
The proof of benefit is gonna come into play on Sixth Streets a little bit and that's what Blaine's kinda getting at, so that's why we wanna talk to those individual property owners on Sixth Street. Whether or not they wanna take on some additional um, debt or if they feel like that they'd rather not.
So.
Sidewalk, sidewalk will be included to the.
Right.
We gotta replace the, the sanitary and watering kind of services across the sidewalk, but whether or not we need to wholesale replace it. That would be something that we want to talk to the residents and see if that's what they wanna do. Um, we can kind of match back in as best we can, um, it's just gonna be a matter of cost and what, what the residents really wanna do.
Are those uh, are those uh. Townhomes on the west side of Iowa Avenue, are they gonna be in on that also?
Nope, we, we don't start until we go across the highway.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be everything on the north side of Twenty-Eight.
So the line itself is going in, not on the east side then, along those three houses then?
The.
Of, of Iowa Avenue, I'm talking, right?
Iowa Avenue, everything north of five to Twenty-Eight, so.
Oh, you're not doing anything between Seventh and?
Nope.
Oh, nothing between there?
Nope, it's just north. So the, basically the three property owners are, the University of Minnesota.
Okay.
Uh, has the farmland on the one side, you have the USDA and then the other side is Superior.
Okay, I, I thought you were talking from Seventh Street, all, all along Iowa Avenue, okay, well, that clears that up.
And so, so just to kind of finish with the financial, when I did a, a look at it, you know. Based upon, you know, the numbers I was looking at, you know, I get down to around a million and a half bond issue. That would be a special assessment bond and, and if, in order for us to do it, we'd have to assess about three hundred thousand dollars. Which um, currently as it sits, the assessments probably add up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the, the, the other part of that is, and I can talk about it when we get to the next resolution, you know, what's gonna happen. Uh, with, with the, the hearing on this, um, we have to look at some things really close. Because when you do assessments, you have to figure out what's, what's, what's a property owner gonna be able to pay.
And when you're talking about the assessments, you were talking about the complete project Sixth, North Columbia and Iowa, correct?
They're kinda in a three different components.
Right, but when you're talking about the assessment, you're talking about the whole, all three.
All three projects.
Okay, that's when you said seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yep.
Okay, okay, I understand.
So, so the bottom line is from a feasibility standpoint, it's feasible from an engineering standpoint, it's feasible from a financing standpoint. To be able to move forward with this project, and so that's what I'm recommending that the city council do is pass a resolution accepting this uh, this feasibility report. And then we can move on to the next resolution.
I'll move on that resolution, approving an engineering and financing study for the East Sixth, North Columbia, North Iowa uh, project.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, on the, on the Iowa, are we running, we're running water and sewer along that?
Just.
Just sewer?
Water's been replaced there.
Water's already done?
Yep, so it's just.
Just the sewer?
Sewer, yep.
Gotcha.
Uh, we'll do roll call vote.
Councilmembers Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay, and then we got a resolution citing a preliminary assessment hearing for the East Sixth, North Columbia, North Iowa Avenue Improvement Project.
Yeah, so the next step in the process would be for us, and we've identified, Sandy and I work on this, we've identified all the property owners that are affected in this property. Uh, on East Sixth Street, I think there's thirty of them. On uh, Columbia Avenue, I think there was what? It's different for water and sewer, just because of the, where the lines are, so it's like eleven and nine. And then on Iowa Avenue, there's like three. You know, and yet at the same time, you know, one of the things, so we don't have all the detailed information on what that means. The, the first step is to set the preliminary hearing and we have the basic information in there about what the uh, project's gonna cost. And then you can see a breakdown of what, what's water, what's sewer, what's streets, what, you know, what's curb and gutter, what's sidewalks and, and storm sewer and, and. And then what we'll do is uh, we'll send and, publish a notice in the paper, we'll send a notice to all the property owners. And we'll invite them to a public hearing on the twenty-third, right, of?
November, yep.
November twenty-third and we'll, we'll have a meeting with them and we'll, we'll, Jeff will be here and we'll lay everything out and present it to them. We can talk about sidewalks, we can talk about storm sewer, you know, the, the interesting part is when we did Highland Homes and we did down below the high school. They didn't have storm sewer and they were, you know, backyards were wet and all that kind of stuff and, and uh, you got happy people now. Because that was put in. This one's a little bit different, just because it's on a side of a hill, you know, and, and yet at the same time. You know, we know that it affects the roadway and maintenance on it and stuff like that, so we'll explain it all to them and then find out what they wanna do. Find out what they're interested in and then at that point, then the city council can decide, you know, what they wanna do as far as moving forward with plans and. Specifications and then ultimately the idea would be to bid it out probably in February, March. With construction to start, you know, the earliest weekend in the spring, you know, like doing that, but this, this, you know. The biggest thing about this project, just the reason we're doing it is because we, we're having failures. These are old sewer lines, old water lines, anybody that's driven on Columbia Avenue knows that it's been ducked up a couple times. You know, cause we've bad brakes and stuff like that. So, but it is interesting, it's probably the most interesting one from the standpoint that it's really three distinct. Separate projects and that one's, you know, partly state aid, one's kind of the normal assessment and the other one is as abnormal as you can. But yet at the same time, when you start looking at things, we have property owners on either side of Iowa Avenue. And our assessment policy was changed where twenty-five percent of the roadway uh, would be assessed to the adjacent property owner. Based upon the front footage of their property. A- and so then you got three owners that basically side that whole system. And, and so, you know, we'll send notice to those owners too and just find out what they're thinking about that. Very few, there's very few connections in some cases, so. Recommendation is to go ahead and set it up and we'll send notices out and, and then we'll see what the people think.
I'll move on the resolution setting a preliminary assessment hearing for the East Sixth, North Columbia, North Iowa Avenue Improvement Project. I will second.
Need other discussion on this? Okay, we'll do roll call vote on this resolution.
Councilmember Salvi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay, resolution authorizing the purchase of a transit bus.
So we, when we get the grants to be able to buy these, then, then we have to do a resolution authorizing the purchase. So there's two different ones, one is gonna be a hundred percent funded by the state and one's gonna be ninety percent funded by the state. So, we got two separate resolutions.
And these are um, replacing or adding?
Uh, replacing.
I'll, I'll move on the resolution authorizing the purchase of a transit bus at a hundred percent.
I'll second.
Okay, um, probably not much more discussion than a hundred percent financing paid for, so roll call vote on that.
Councilmembers Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes. Okay, then we have the resolution authorizing purchase of a transit bus at ninety percent funding. Same thing, we're just.
How do we end up with two buses at, replacing two buses at the same time? I thought it was normally like one a year.
It was, but then they, they got a bunch of money. You know, so then they, they, they kind of bumped it up. Well, and now we're behind because of being able to get them. That's part of it, but.
So we probably won't get these, as I read, somewhere to further out in, like, it's not gonna be real fast that we're receiving?
Yeah, well, well, we'll see, you know, how it's gonna work, but it, it's just, there's money that was flying around and, and actually we have a third one that's. I'll, I'll talk about that when we get to the city manager newsletter, but we have a third one and that's a fully electric one, that's, it's not dead. Yes.
Do we have one that's fully electric now?
No, but we've been authorized one, so it's, I'll, I'll tell you where we're at with that, but. But that's why, that's why we're doing two of them now. It's just the funding that the state has and how they've set it up.
Yeah, I guess it makes sense if you get a hundred percent funding on the first one and ninety percent on the second one to, to be running new equipment, less maintenance. And fixing.
The normal percentage that we would pay would be eighty percent. You know, and, and the, the one thing I would tell you, it's, it's ten percent local, but one of the things that I talked a little bit about during the budget meeting. We maybe talk about it during our work session, but they're funding a hundred percent of our operation. So technically, our fees that we're charging are probably gonna be over what, what the fun, what the actual expenses are for the transit. And we can use that overage to pay the local share of this. So theoretically, we're probably gonna be a hundred percent on, on this one too. That's just the way it works out.
I'll move on that resolution authorizing the purchase of a transit bus at ninety percent.
I will second.
Okay, roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes.
Mayor.
Okay, and the final resolution authorizing fund transfers.
Yeah, and this is just housekeeping stuff, you know, actually, uh, we talked about it budget time that originally we thought we're gonna be doing. One thing and then we didn't have to do that and, and so then it, we had already transferred all the money into twenty twenty-one. But the budget adjustment we did for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Um, changed some of the transfers we had to make and so then Whitney went through and, and looked at that and that's, that's all we're doing. We're transferring a little bit less uh, from the capital life fund, so we had to put it back. Accounting stuff.
I'll move on that resolution, authorizing fund transfers.
I'll second. Need more discussion on that one? Okay, Sandy, roll call please.
Councilmembers Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Willis?
Yes. Okay, city managers reports and recommendations.
So actually, the first thing I, I need to just ask or talk about is um, we're working. We're working with Zarbeck, Germany. I, I think I had sent out a text or, or something to the city council that. Uh, client, actually, it's being hosted by the Climate Smart Municipality Group, Dr. Sabina Engel. Uh, where it was one of the things that um, um, Chris Watkins was working on. As a next step in our relationship with Zarbeck, Germany was to get together for a community conversation. Between uh, people from Morris and people from Zarbeck, Germany. And that has been set up for November thirteenth. At uh, ten o'clock in the morning, our time, because that. Facilitates the eight hour difference for them, uh, German time. But the question is whether or not anybody can attend. I had, I think I had sent out some information. That's deer hunting, one of the things we shared with. The German people is that deer hunting in Minnesota is kind of a holiday. Because it's completely different in Germany because not that many people hunt in Germany or have guns and stuff like that, but. Um, it's, it's going to be a Zoom meeting. It's going to be facilitated by the University of Minnesota. And, and so then basically, what will happen is we'll do a little bit of uh. Intro to Morris and they'll do a little bit of an intro to Zarbeck. Um, they, they're very interested in the fact that we celebrated a hundred and fifty year anniversary. Because it's their nine hundredth this year. So I thought that was.
Baby.
I thought, yeah, that's what, it's exactly what I said when they said that. I said, we're just a baby. But uh, but what they're, what they're going to do is they're going to have some community people from Zarbeck that are going to maybe do two minutes of. My name is so, so and so and I live in Zarbeck and this is what I do. You know, so it's just more of an interest in, and we're going to try to have a few farmers. We're going to try to have a few teachers, we're going to try to have some high school kids because we know there's connection. Uh. Brittany House up at the, up at the school has been working on that to make that connection with the Zarbeck. Students a, and then the government, having some government people. So realistically, we're trying to get about ten people to participate in that, so. If you can, I, I, I think Kevin said he's going deer hunting, I would imagine. I think Jeff goes deer hunting. I don't know if Brian does, but. Uh, and I haven't heard Sheldon's on vacation, so. Or living life as a retiree right now and I'll talk to him when he comes back, but I plan on being there. Uh, um, I know there's several people from the university that plan on being there, but. Um, if somebody else from the council could be here, that'd be nice. You know, just to participate in. It'll be fun to, they're going to have, they're going to facilitate it and then they're going to do a couple breakout rooms where. Um, they're going to have interpreters that can interpret for the uh, German. Older German peoples don't necessarily speak English. High school kids that are probably part of the program do. And then they obviously have a number of people like Guido uh, that, that can translate for somebody that's speaking German within uh. One of the breakout rooms and they, the university does a really good job of facilitating that. Uh, interpretation part where you can click on it and you can hear. Somebody talking in English if somebody's talking in German. So if you could let me know, if you could be there, that'd be great before we go and then uh. We got the work session coming up next week. Uh, I'll provide some information to you beforehand on that. Um, let me just think if there's something else that I want to touch on. We've been working on solar. We got two buildings up and running. The plan is to finish the other two. They're, they're just about done with the library. They're going to. They've been s- starting on City Hall. And then the plan is once, uh, we actually have rebate checks coming in from Otter Tail on the first two buildings are ready. And then the plan is that when all four of them are done, then we're going to have a get together with the city council and. Otter Tail and Morris Model and, and Blue Horizon Solar and everybody and just. Do like a little celebratory event in front of one of the buildings, maybe the liquor store. Um, I told them I can't give liquor out, but. Um, but we probably could figure something out, but, and then Otter Tail's going to have a big check. You know, rebate, because the rebates on this, these projects are, you know, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a big, big, big project. So that's one of the things that's happening. Let me see if there's anything else. Oh, and, and just. To give you an update on electric transit buses, um, Jeff, Jeff came in this afternoon when I was just finishing, but. The state of Minnesota applied for the buses and there's actually, the reason it's taken a little bit longer is because. They actually added one other transit system. We were, we were um. Given the go ahead for one bus and then there's another transit system that, that is actually going to get two buses. Uh, but the state process, number one is they have to select a consultant who's going to. Provide the expertise to be able to look at what the plant, what the specifications are for the buses. You know, how they're going to be used, the charging systems, the routes. Uh, and then part of it is to model it so that it can be used for the next transit systems. That apply for electric buses and so I. Kind of stupidly volunteered to be on the evaluation team for the consultant review. And I just finished it today. There's uh, three companies that submitted RFPs. And then the state's going to vet them, vet them out based upon our ratings and stuff and then once they select them, the timeline is between. Now and December first, they're going to select a consultant. December first, the consultant's going to come in and start working on. The specifications for the charging system, the buses. And then um, the procurement process for getting them and then. It's going to be a year long process to figure out what buses we're actually going to get. And to get them ordered and to get them um, coming. So you're probably looking at twenty twenty-three when that bus is going to come. Uh, but they have to go through this big long process and. Uh, it, actually, the two companies that, that, that I liked are really big companies, really big companies. They do this. One was working with Duluth and, and St. Cloud and, and Rochester and. Metro in the Twin Cities and just all over the country. They're working on these projects and they have an office in the Twin Cities with people, engineers that are experts on doing this. So, any other questions on other things?
Refresh us again where we're at with the transit, electric transit buses on approval, one, two, where are we at again?
It's, it's one and we're in the process of figuring out what buses we're going to get.
Okay.
Is really where it's at.
And that meeting with Zarbeck, because that's a Zoom, we could zoom in on it anywhere.
Yeah, you can, you can zoom in anywhere.
Deer stand, what better way to show? The people of Zarbeck, what goes on here in Minnesota?
You better have the volume off when you miss that.
Not sure we have reception where I'm at.
I bet you do.
When you miss.
I've heard what goes on at his deer camp. I don't think it should be on Zoom.
That's right.
It's wild.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we've had at least twice that somebody zoomed in from a tractor. At a city council meeting, so that was kind of an interesting presentation, but. Yeah, I don't know if that, the big thing is to make sure you got wifi that. You know, you're going to be able to make that connection and be able to talk to people.
Okay, then you did.
Maybe I'll have my deer by then and I could do it. I don't know.
You could.
He'll, he won't be ready.
We'll be gone. I did drive off the Eagles Ballpark and looked at those spaded trees. That's really impressive.
It really changes the, you know, when I drove by there, it's like, it really makes a difference when you get bigger trees.
Yeah.
You know.
Trees make a difference. That's crazy, huh?
Shade already.
Nice.
I did uh, check the caliber on all the trees yesterday, so we'll monitor and see how their growth is in the coming years. For ten, we're like University of Minnesota people and see just how much growth they actually put on.
Yep. It's impressive.
It was a good, good project and we got it in right before the rain.
Yep.
Okay, and we had other business and you already mentioned the work session next.
Yep.
Thursday at five fifteen, right here. Um, other items, anything informational, anybody else? All right, meeting adjourned.